Bernice is not here today, so I'll have the honors of running the meeting. So, the first thing we need to do is, we need to call this meeting to order. And we're going to verify the meeting notice and adoption of the agenda. So, everybody saw the agenda? Everybody's copying it? Okay. So, let's stand and let's do the pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have a full agenda this evening. I just want to mention, when we get to the reports section, we're going to change the order a little bit, and we're going to do that in order to allow the students that have reports to work through. So, we'll do tech ed, then we'll do the one-to-one, then TBIS, and then do educator effectiveness at the end. But, before we get on to the reports, we do have item number three, which is comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration. So, if we have anyone that would like to come up to the microphone, just state your name and address for the record.
Mike Cluzio, I live at 4559 South 119th Street in Greenfield. I was here two weeks ago, basically the same item. I'm asking to have the decision that was made to eliminate the eighth grade graduation ceremony at the middle school reversed. I know that's not a direct school board decision, but I also added a second sub-item, or actually it would become the primary item, would be to have all traditions of Whitnall schools be identified as such and subsequently protected from change without input from the public or approval of the school board. In other words, if we have a ceremony like an eighth grade graduation that's truly a tradition of the district, maybe we ought to have a policy that protects kind of traditions like that from just one year they're not happening. So, if I could have something like that, maybe the discussion of a potential policy to protect traditions, that would be the agenda item. Thanks.
Anyone else have any, have anything else for future consideration? All right. Then we will move on to the reports. And we're going to start with our tech ed presentation.
So, while this is warming up, I'm just going to introduce Mr. Johannes, who's then going to take us through a presentation, visual presentation, lots of visuals. We have students here, we have products here, we have all kinds of great stuff. But, one thing that I just want to put out to the board and ask that you notice and note as we go through tonight, tech ed is a changing field. It's changing ever more so than it ever has before. It's completely different than what you and I may remember tech ed being. If you go, for example, to Generac and check out the floor of Generac today, it looks very different than it did even 10 years ago. It's clean, it's bright, it's quiet, and it's very, very different. So, you'll see today quite a different face to tech ed. Some of the things will be similar as far as some of the construction projects, but you're also going to see some three-dimensional printing and some AutoCAD renderings that are very much, very much technical. And I was telling Dr. Holtz that I thought about this presentation over the weekend, because on last Friday, the FDA-approved nanobiotechnology for the, for colonoscopies, actually, it's a camera that comes in the form of a pill. So, within the next five years or so, it should be released as a standard procedure. The not-so-pleasant thought of a colonoscopy may very well not be as unpleasant as it was before, because you just swallow a pill and go in for your procedure rather than all that other great stuff.
Get that jug.
So, the reason I thought of that was, was that when we think about innovation, we think about what our students are doing now and the adventures that are going to be around 20, 30, 40 years from now, it's great to celebrate what we have. So, without further ado, Mr. Johannes is going to get us started.
Well, good evening, and thank you for having us. My name's Mark Johannes, and right now with the tech ed, we're starting to experience a lot of growth and having a lot of fun and doing quite a few things. The first subtitle here would be "The Modified Construction." It seems like in our classes, we always have some of the learning disabled and those type of students that come into the class. And what we try to do is, we try to work with them and get them to be able to produce something and take it home. So, with no further ado, I'll let Mary DeMaret talk about that.
My name is Mary DeMaret, and I am a special education here at Whitnall High School. And this is, can you address?
No, my seat is.
All right. And Noah had the opportunity to work with Mr. Johannes in the tech ed class this last semester, and he was able to make a picture frame. Can you show your frame? All right. So, this is some of Noah's work that he produced in Mr. J's class. And I feel like having our students in that class is very important for them. A lot of our students are more hands-on, and they don't quite have the opportunity within the classroom to work in this capacity and build these types of things. And so, Noah really enjoyed working more hands-on. And it takes the lessons that we're learning in class with our math and applies it to real-life situations for the students that they don't quite have that experience in my, the confines of my, my classroom. So, this is some of the work that Noah produced with Mr. Johannes. And we also made iPad holders and holders for whiteboards and slant boards for our students within the classrooms that they were able to decorate. And they come in handy, we use them pretty much every day. So, these are just a few of the examples that some of our students got the opportunity to work on with Mr. J this year in tech ed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's really nice, Noah.
Good job, Noah. One of the things, one of the things I'd like to add is, while building that, Noah was with us during the whole process, and we actually asked him to put some marks on there. The one part that, you know, he doesn't do is cut, but he has to set it all up and get it arranged, and he does all the sanding and everything else. So, it allows him to learn several different things, which makes it really good for us. The next class that we have is our construction and advanced construction. And this class is really starting to take on some fun and different things. The first thing is, right now, we're redoing, we're doing steps in front of the stage for the grease production. And they're actually all freestanding, but they'll be quite strong and really in good shape. But, one of the things that we did with the classes, if you can look over here, we took it to a different level. And what I did was, I gave our students the ability to make a small little cabinet. And I said, "There's one thing I'd like you to understand is, that when you're making a small cabinet, it's no different than making a big cabinet." So, what we did was, I took about three or four of the students, and we went ahead, and we made this. And then we have sold it already. And the nice thing is, it's all solid oak, and this will have adjustable shelves down here, and this is the color that they wanted. So, I have a kind of two different phases that we're at. So, we're hoping to get into some cabinetry as that goes. And I have Nick Bell and Tyler Cross to talk about our construction class and how it's kind of working.
Hi. I'm Nick Bell, I'm a senior here at Whitnall.
I'm Tyler Cross, I'm a junior at Whitnall.
So, basically, I'm in the advanced construction portion of the class, and right now, what we're doing are building the steps in front of the stage. And I also help out in the construction portion, because I have second-hour study halls, so I get to go there and help. And we've been working on it for about two weeks, three weeks now. We've got quite a substantial amount of work done. It's about 40 feet long. As of right now, we've used about 250, close to 300 two-by-fours on it. Stuff we've learned on it is tremendous. Nothing that we've learned in the construction classes in the past three years have been close to that. You know, anything from the fine work to the plywood on the top that has to look good, to the rough carpentry to get the angles right because it's on a curve, all that, you know. Since we're in advanced construction, we get a little bit more freedom. He doesn't step us through the whole process, and it's fun to do the problem-solving, you know, figure out what, if you mess up, how to fix the mistake, that type of stuff. Also, teamwork's a big one, because you can't have everybody clustered in one area of the project. So, you know, you have people over here, over here, and leading the team, proper way to lead the team, and get the project done that he needs, the task done that, and the time limit he gives us.
Yeah. He, he works very well with every one of his students. He specialized, he picks out their, their special abilities and really helps them excel in their abilities. He takes people that don't, aren't very active in the class, and he helps them and motivates them to participate in the class. And as of right now, we're on track with our project.
Another big portion with all the freedom that we do get is safety. And it's, at first, we struggled a little bit because people screwing off, but we, we got it under control, and it, he taught us a lot of the safety things that we haven't maybe been taught in the classes. Very safe, we haven't had any injuries, nothing like that, which is quite extraordinary for some of the stuff we've done.
Are you working off of print?
Uh, we did have a design at first, but lots of it isn't on design anymore. We did have a rough what we want, the lengths and stuff like that, to get us going.
Yeah, but since we're working on it, everything, everything kind of changes a little bit with the...
Nothing plum, huh?
No.
It's level.
Level.
Working on it. Yep. Any questions?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms.
So, you do this just in class, or do you do this after class time too?
Um, as of right now, we just do it in class. Like I said, I have open campus, second hour, so I do go help, because he has a second-hour construction class, so I go in there and help then. But as of right now, we do get enough done in class that we haven't had come in outside of the classroom.
I will ask a question. Both of you, you're, what are you going to do after high school?
I'm planning on going to UW-Plattville for electrical engineering.
Going into the Army.
Into the Army.
And a mechanic.
Okay. I mean, so, from everything you've, you've had experience with Whitnall over the years, what benefits you the most? What have you, what has been your biggest, this is where I want to go, and help you get to where you want to be?
Um, also, the math and science was nice. It kind of made up that, you know, I like math, science, and engineering is all math, science. And stuff like this was fun, you know, that I like getting my hands dirty, you know, I don't want to be grading papers all day type of deal. Don't want to be in a cubicle, so...
We have some teachers here.
Be honest. And then stuff like this, you know, the problem-solving aspect of it, you know, engineering is a lot of problem-solving. So, you learn the problem-solving, then you put the pieces together.
Yeah, we get the experience to work with other students and all different grade levels of the construction classes and everything, so kind of build leadership and role models, so that helps out. And just everything in Whitnall has, all the teachers have been encouraging the students to be more group-led rather than teacher-led, so that's a big help.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not to mention...
Good job, John. Johannes, I'm sorry. Yes? We were going to do question-and-answer DM, but I'm going to go back a little bit. Noah, it's geared towards Noah, and are you Noah's mom?
Yes.
You should be proud of yourself. Okay? He's a fine young man. Noah, what do you want to do when you grow up?
I could tell you if I could talk for never I would know.
That's, okay.
He, he actually volunteers at the Pabst here in, in the corner, and they let him come once a week, and he works. And he can own his own thrift shop on Goodwill, that would make him very happy.
Okay. So, this year, his experiences, beneficial?
Yes. Noah is unique. He, we tried to get him into radio classes when we modified things. His class has been perfect for him. He's done a great job at including Noah, you know, like any other kid, and he's always been good at helping him, and then getting him involved and doing things. He may not get it done as fast, but he will get it done.
Right.
And I know that they talked about even doing maybe some home improvement classes or adaptive classes for the kids, like in his class, so they know how to, you know, fix things in their home, separate, just simple tasks. So, usually, we start in one place, and these things lead to bigger things for kids like them. Because he's very capable of being with the regular kids, he's just got to be still hard.
Sure.
It's been great. Just, if you're looking for more things out in the future, I think you'll get involved with him in the next year or two.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Our next class is transportation and energy. I'll just give a quick background. We kind of took this in two directions. We did a lot of pre-work on some of our renewable energies and the fields that are becoming popular now, where to go into. And then we decided, as our weather came along, that we would develop a sled and to see how far it would go with people on it, and we would find some trials and tribulations with it. So, I do have a young man, Cody, and he'll come up and he will talk about the class. So...
I'm Cody Gerber, I'm a sophomore here at Whitnall. At first, we started with making, like, kind of like, what was it, Derby cars?
The Derby car.
We learned about safety, aerodynamics, the different tools. Then we moved on to CO2 cars. That was really fun. They, we did not, I don't know if we didn't get to test them, because I missed about a week of school. After that, we went and did the toboggan sleds. We learned about the wood glue and the nail gun. Also, he taught, didn't spare to even think about not telling us what to do. So, that's pretty much it. There's not much we did.
So, you had to think through some of these things?
Yes, we all got to do our own designs. Mine's downstairs. Yeah, we...
Your design on the sled?
Yes, and on the CO2 cars. So...
So, have you rid your sled yet? Rolled your sled?
No. After that, I missed about two weeks.
Okay, so we can take it out tonight?
I don't think it would do really well.
Oh, come on, really? It's better than the one I designed. Oh, wait, I didn't design one. So, you don't think it would do well?
Honestly, no.
Cody, why?
You got to go back to your design and...
We had some problems. The first test, we didn't have the right equipment. We tried putting, what was it, that kind of...
We put some wax on it.
Put wax on it. That did not work at all.
Wrong kind of wax.
Yeah. And then, um...
So, we had to problem-solve what to do next. There you go.
And then we also ran out of glue. That was horrible.
Really? Rubber cement doesn't work?
I don't think we had any, honestly.
Miss Sabrowski just said the big optimal word here.
Duck tape.
Duck tape. Amazing, amazing product.
Yeah. Um, after that, I, like I said, I wasn't here, so I didn't really get to test my sled.
Did you have fun?
Yes, I had a lot of fun, and I learned a lot.
I was, my next question, did you learn anything?
Yes.
Okay. So, now you know what not to do?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
What do you want your next project to be?
Well, actually, I'm not in that class anymore. I'm in intro to AutoCAD right now.
And what are you looking forward to about that class?
Mostly designing buildings and cars, honestly.
And where do you want that to put you?
I'm sorry, what?
What do you want to do two, three years from now?
I actually want to go into, like, just designing on AutoCAD. My uncle does it for a living, and that's what I want to do.
And have you looked ahead to the classes you're going to need at Whitnall? Do we have those? Have we made plans to preside them? So, you feel pretty comfortable with the curriculum ahead of you?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you. The next class that we have is home improvement. And I wasn't able to, well, the two students that are up there, they are not in attendance, so I will kind of explain. What we, what we did at home improvement was, we kind of went over what is a wall, how do you lay out the wall, and then, after that, can you put it together? And we did find out that some of our students do not nail very well. However, we did get it together. After that process, they were given two sheets of drywall, and they, and they were told to drywall it. Then they had to run all the electrical wires, they had to do a junction box with a pigtail, and they had to put a switch and a plug in it. And then they had to also drill it out for plumbing. I would have loved to bring up one of the walls, and, well, I would have loved to bring up two of them, but I didn't have a lot of room, so I set them outside, and they are now frozen together. So, I can't, I can't get them up here. I have to bring about 12 of them up, so... But, the whole purpose of the class is, one of the things that I had a lot of fun with was, once they decided that they got the, their wall perfect, because they had to put corner bead, they had to mud it and tape it and texture it too, to get everything kind of ready, as if you were going to then paint it, then I'd walk over with a hammer and I'd put a hole in it. And then I'd tell them to fix it. And so, the whole goal of that was that a lot of people, or a lot of the kids said, "You know, I got to do that at home now." And I said, "Yeah, that's good." So, that was a good process for us. So, that's our home improvement. The next one is our intro to AutoCAD. And this is a, this is a class where I truly feel like the students are way above the teachers at times. And what I mean by that is, they're really good at seeking programs, finding them out, making the mistakes, and going right past where we're still kind of sitting there. And so, the first thing we did was, we just kind of let them play around and draw. And then by the end of the class, they had a few things that they had to do. So, Hannah? And that is her drawing of...
Yes. My name is Hannah Myers. I'm a senior at Whitnall. That top drawing is actually mine. Like you said, the first two weeks, week and a half of class, he just had us log on to Google SketchUp and try to figure it out, which personally, I didn't like that. I like having tutorials, I like being told, like, which aspects of it that I need to learn how to do, just the basics. But it turned out, even the basics for what I wanted to do weren't, like, enough, since my ideas were too complex. For example, the top part of the building on the left, there was no tutorial that I could find that was how to make a cone like that.
There isn't.
There really wasn't. So, we spent a day just trying to figure out how in the world to make a cone. And it was, it was nice how he just let us figure out what our ideas were and how to make them and put them into a project. And this project that we did here was, we were to pick an architect of our choice that was to our interest and build a two-story office building, and the design of the architect at first, and then modify it to fit our own personal style. And I chose Frank Lloyd Wright. And then we were to make a parking structure that would fit 65 spaces, I believe, on the right. And just for fun, I got done with the project early. I decided to make a fountain on the right that kind of reflected the arches of the building itself. That's about it?
All right. So, you're a senior.
Yes.
What are you doing? What's your goal?
My goal for college, you mean?
After Whitnall.
I have been accepted into UW-Madison, and I'm majoring in interior design.
Are you? So, this is going to be right up your field. You're going to have, this is going to be, you're going to be using a lot of this.
Every day.
Wonderful. Did you, have you enjoyed your last four years in high school?
For the most part, yes.
Bit of challenge. Am I right?
Yeah, of course.
Did you, freshman to now where you are now?
Learned a lot.
Have you?
Yes.
Positive, negative experience?
I could say both, of course. Both academically and outside of the classroom.
Okay. From your teachers, like, you've been around, just like my kids, they had their favorites, they had their least favorites. And I asked them, I said, "Is it because of the context of the class they were teaching, or was it the personalities of the teachers?"
I'll be completely honest with you. Some of the times, it was the personality of the teachers. Like, I've always loved math, and there was two math teachers where there was such a personality conflict with multiple students. So, in that aspect...
Were you both able to come over that, overcome that process?
It was more myself being self-driven and figuring out for myself what to do in those classes than overcoming it with the teacher. It would get to the point where you just ignore the teacher and learn to YouTube things and figure it out.
So, you know, you're going to Madison for sure?
Yes.
You excited?
Yes, very.
Well, I'm excited for you. I mean, it's a great school, and long-term. You want to stay in Wisconsin? You want to leave Wisconsin?
Probably leave Wisconsin and go to Europe, since their designs, well, because they move faster over there, and we get all of Europe's designs can...
Faster than Hill's Corners?
Yes. I think life is a little faster than Hill's Corners at times. But I'm with you. Go ahead. Yeah, that's great. So, I congratulate you. Congratulations on the graduation, you know, I mean, enjoy Madison, and just look at your dreams and make sure you fulfill them, you know? Just keep looking ahead, you know what I mean? The past is something to build off of. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I'll just quickly say, Hannah challenged me, okay? Because we would sit and we would look at the project, and next thing you know, it was, I'd go, "Well, what about this?" And then fire back a couple of questions, and the next thing you know, off on that next tangent. So, we were able to work together really well with that. And that's what I try to do with most of the students in that class. So, our last class is our advanced AutoCAD. Now, I have to be really honest, it's the first semester of teaching it. So, when we go back and we want to look at skills that students have carried over that bring with them, I want to say that the kids in this advanced class are really good. I showed up on the first day, we were asked to design by the business teacher to redesign the school store, and to look at that. And I just walked in and I said, "Go. I want two designs, I want this, this way, and let's see where you're all at." And so, that's one of, one of the things that we have done so far and will be moving forward. The next is that we do have a 3D printer now. And on the 3D printer, that's starting to get pretty exciting, and we're starting to mess around with that, and we're going to be able to make parts from our AutoCAD out of, out of our, some of our software. So, Krista, we'll come up and talk about the school store, and then Vince will talk about the 3D printing. And then Vince will talk about the 3D printing.
I'm Krista Striveling. I'm a senior.
I'm Vince Piacentin. I'm a junior.
These pictures are my project that was the school store. We were told to, basically they wanted to knock out the front wall. So you can see, it's changing. So now you can't see. There, there's the front. Basically, on the left, that would be like a gate, like you see at the malls, where they like slide open and close. So for my design, I have, the front could be opened almost like a concession stand. So like you could have just that part open. Or you could open the entire store where they would sell like t-shirts. And they don't have gym uniforms anymore, but that kind of stuff. And then the front could be open and you could sell just like snacks, drinks, those kinds of things.
All right, so first week into class, Mr. Jay brought in the printer, handed me the instructions and told me to figure it out. Explain it to him. Explaining it to him's the hard part, but... Some of the stuff you're seeing was printed. Some of it's been sanded already, some of it hasn't. Some of it just requires, you know, a little sanding, clean it up. This morning, I designed a phone case with, that could be sold in the Whitnall store, with a nice Falcon on the back, WHS. So hopefully sometime this week, we can print that out, see how that looks. But basically, it's really nice to just be able to design whatever Mr. Jay tells us to and be able to print it out and see how it actually, actually looks. See if it makes sense.
On something like, how long does it take to print something like this?
Those keychains took about 10 minutes.
10 minutes and then obviously...
Phone cases are like a half hour.
And then the apple?
The apple took a couple hours. It wasn't too bad. But a lot of that time is just preparing it. Like it has to heat up. And the nozzle gets over 200 degrees Celsius. And then it heats the table. And once that goes, it just starts cooking. Just rolls out. It's pretty incredible to watch, actually.
So everything that, so in your CAD, you had to design it on CAD?
Yeah, or SketchUp, which is the program they use for that.
All right. And that first me back here, SketchUp. When you laid this out, and you said a school store, we could, I could say to you, just, because again, I'll, I'll say it. I own a restaurant. I could say, design a restaurant. When you looked at your assignment, and you said to yourself, I'm going to design a school store, what went through your head? What did you think?
Well, we were given, like we were given measurements. We went to the room that exists now. And the business teacher told us some specific things that he wanted in it. Like he wanted to be able to sell spiritware. He wanted to be able to sell food. He wanted to be able to sell school supplies. And so he also said he wanted wood. Like there's some cabinets in there now, but they're like plastic. And he said he wanted wood finish stuff. So basically, I just tried to come up with different ways to display each item. So like you can see, like the counter could be like food and school supplies. And then all the shelving would be like for spiritware and that kind of stuff. It was just like a step-by-step, figure out where each thing would fit in, kind of.
So when you thought the process through, did you realize, or did you, maybe you didn't? Did you realize that you looked at the whole concept? And you put yourself not just in an engineering perspective, but you put yourself in a business perspective? You put yourself in a entrepreneurial perspective? Did you realize that you did all of that at one, at one moment?
Not really.
All right, now that I, now that I say that to you, can you see what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Can you see, yours too? Can you see how what you've learned and what you were playing with and what you were assigned to do? Can you see how you can backtrack and see how it's going to affect everything? What you do today will affect what you do tomorrow. And you learned off the past? Can you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah? I mean, that's the whole goal. I mean, but now that somebody says it to you, can you feel it? Can you see that all of that kind of swings around and comes into perspective?
Yeah.
That's the goal. It's educators and the goal of the school board and administration, is to get you to look at that and also go, oh, yeah, I see what he's saying. Do you feel that? When you look at that, that's, that's a beautiful design, by the way.
Thank you.
Just so you know. And again, being a restaurateur and, okay, it's all about marketing, that'll work exceptionally well. But do you see how that all works together? That's all I want to know. Thanks.
I was going to tell Krista that in my business, I sell the college bookstores. And there is a whole business right now out there of redesigning college bookstores, because the product line is no longer just your traditional textbook. They need to increase their sales based on bringing in other products. So you're pretty much ready, ready to go. What are your future plans, both of you, after Whitnall?
I will most likely be attending Valparaiso University to study civil engineering.
I'm hoping to go out to California, Santa Clara University, and study hardware design. And then go to a big-name computer company like Apple and design what'll be on your desk.
Take that with you. Might get you in.
That was great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's, I guess to bring it full circle, the whole reason I brought up the camera pillow was that the camera pillow was one of the first prototypes and finished manufactured products that's printed by a 3D printer. So to have that in our schools and then have it to be such a relevant technology is pretty amazing. And right now in the works, we have another larger 3D printer coming. So pretty soon, we can like print pumpkins?
Maybe. And we're going to be able to let the middle school now use the littler 3D printer so that we can get them started on it. So that's your visual presentation?
I have a couple of questions. I think you might have answered part of one of mine. How, first of all, I want to thank all the students and their families for coming tonight. It just makes it so, I guess, exciting for me and for us to get to see what we're here to do is provide that opportunity for you all to be successful in your lives. So thank you all for coming. So my question is, how up to date are, are we with our equipment for these students? I mean, the 3D printer sounds pretty relevant to today's society. How about the rest? Are we up to date or do we need better?
Well, I think when you look at certain things, by having a 3D printer, there are not a lot of schools right now that have it. So for us to be able to have that, it's really, really an awesome thing. My wife works at GE. And we're actually going to have one of the persons come from GE and talk to the class about it. Because GE is going to start incorporating 3D printing into their engine designs. All of their fuel injectors, injectors will be made from a 3D printer. And this gentleman has a patent through GE. So he's going to come and talk to the class and, and show some different things. So when you look in that way, we're really, I mean, that, having that one item and letting the kids kind of really experiment on it. Because they, it's the problem-solving process. It's a design process. Here, make it. It's kind of what you get put on your plate. And so that's kind of where we're going with that. Like anything, there's some other things. Some of the software that is out there, when it comes to some of our AutoCAD and that, we're kind of using just one. But the industry, I think, at times is really focusing on another type. And we, and so there's, there's a fine balance there. You know, we still are able to get out of what we have. But at times, it kind of lags us behind. Especially when the students are extremely focused and directed. Because they kind of surpass that. And then what do you do? So that's where they kind of keep me busy and thinking and redoing. As far as with, down in our shop, I love the way our shop is right now, because we have put some tools in there. But the key part is, we're starting out learning without all of the bells and whistles. So the foundation for carpentry and the foundation for construction is, I want to say quote-unquote, "the old way." That was all made on a table saw, panel saw, and a router. And, you know, if you can do that, then you can get into the CNC and you can get into the laser and all of that. So, you know, those are things that other school districts have that we don't. So, you know, I think there's a give and take there, truthfully.
When it comes to what you just said, I know that this industry is within driving distance to us, because they've approached me, that they have that technology. They don't have the bodies to run it, but they have the owners of these companies. They know it. They're looking for people to come in and do it. The one thing you had said earlier that I wanted to comment on, that was, to me, is valuable, is the fact that you said, they're teaching you. Because our, we're generally same age. What we learned is antiquated.
Oh, very much.
What we're trying to teach them doesn't exist. And if there is a relationship that can work between the two, that you may know, you had talked about AutoCAD, you're, you're ahead. And you understand that us old people are not completely up to there yet, but we're willing, we're supporting you in the fact that we want you to learn. That was key, when you said that earlier, that the kids are teaching you some stuff. The key to our educational process is the fact that you're willing to learn and support. And that is old, that's old school, new school. In the fact, there's a lot of people still believe, no, we're going to teach you all way. We can't. And Ms. Brzezinski, you're, you're a big advocate of this, of looking at things in a different perspective and moving things ahead, knowing that. You know, and the fact of leadership and everything we're going to talk about the rest of the day. It's, to me, that's critical. And that's what makes an educational process. And that's why I asked us a few specific questions. Is where are we where we were and where we're headed?
Right.
Because it all ties together. We can't have, we're not a big enough district to have the latest, greatest technology. Because by the time we get it, it's already antiquated.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Exactly.
But if you're willing to learn through them, with them, that makes our kids better than the kids that have that technology.
And it also helps us be directed in where we want to take classes. Because we can now pinpoint some individual lessons to challenge while we're teaching basics on the other side of that. So, you know, there are, we know that there's this spectrum. So even if one person is more challenged and this person is like, this is too easy, we have the availability to expand our lesson and challenge this person. And then also, hopefully, get this person to get up to that level. And that's kind of where we go. And I think by doing foundation stuff, it's kind of like the birth. Let's get it out there. Let's get kids interested in it now. Let's go. My wife told the gentleman at GE that I just rolled it in and said, figure it out. And he said, that's what I would have done. He says, I'm not going to spend time with the people that are supposed to figure it out. Let them figure it out. And I kind of thought back, you know, I, I'd speak a foreign language to them. They'd already be past like four or five points by the time, you know, I actually got them to where they were starting to print. So it is fun. It is fun to be challenged.
It is. And it goes back to one final thing I'll say is, you go back, remember Voyager 1? Everybody, we were around when that was launched. And we were part of that process. Remember how exciting that was? It's still out there. And they're still communicating with it. And the thing that freaked me out the other week was the fact, nobody knew how to communicate with it. I had to bring a guy back that retired years ago because it was written on 8-track technology. But it's still the fact that, you know, it, there's, there's a combination and there's this correlation between all of it. And that's what I was driving with you. I thank you for doing what you do in technol, not just, just the whole aspect of vocational, the whole, you know, home improvement. God, how many times do we have to look at a wall with a hole in it? Now, that's where you call Quinn. And you say, hey, look, got a hole in the wall. You know what I mean? Come fix it. You know, and his people would walk in and go, and we're done. You and I would look at it and go, I got a hole in the wall. You know what I mean? Now these kids can say, okay, I got a hole in the wall. I'm going to fix it. You know, hopefully, I get to the successful point where I am, or I can call somebody like a Quinn, say, bring your people in.
Yeah, it's about getting, again, those foundations.
And it's great that we have that range, you know? Whether it's, you know, college readiness, or the career tech readiness, or the combination of, that we have, we offer quite the variety.
Well, and I will say, just real quick, is that all of our classes, I consider even if we are in our computer lab, they're hands-on. Where sometimes you just go out, there's, you're going to go into the computer lab and that's all you're going to do. And everything that we try to base everything on is, well, can you get a car up that ramp? If you can't, then it's, you didn't build the right ramp. Or this, or that. So it all goes back to a hands-on process for the students.
So this is our, our whole career in tech program? Because I didn't see any auto mechanics. Do we not offer that at all?
Not at this time.
So this is our whole career in technical program? Are there other programs we should be looking at adding? That was one of the reasons we wanted to talk about this. Like auto mechanics.
Visual representation of what we have here onsite. So we do have other courses that were not presented tonight that are offered through the consortium.
Okay.
Like our Project Lead the Way course.
Right. That's what I thought, through the consortium.
We have, we have a number of, either through youth options or articulation agreement, MATC, we do offer that. But again, when you look at those programs and how relevant it may or may not be, it makes more sense to send the students to MATC, who have the latest and greatest technology where they're learning, for example, auto diagnostics in an environment that makes the most sense. So this is, this is what we offer here onsite right now, with the only teacher who teaches tech ed, you know, at this particular site. But we do have a number of course offerings available. If you look in the course curriculum guide, there's some specifics in there that are offered through that.
Is auto mechanics one? Did I get, that we're offering auto mechanics then through?
It's offered through MATC.
Students have taken it at MATC. So they do guide them. If that's an area of interest, there is, they do guide them too.
Okay, thank you. And thank you too for this, coming to me.
So thank you for joining our district. I know that we were recently hired to join us. So thank you for joining us. And I also am very grateful of the support that you give our students and the obvious sincerity that you teach your courses with. You and I met when we did an eighth-grade orientation for incoming freshmen. And I like this presentation better than the four minutes that I got that night, because you could not possibly cram all this into four minutes to give a full flavor of what tech ed looks like now at the high school. So thanks for doing all this.
Well, thank you.
My, my hard question is, how many girls?
Uh, let me see. Right now in the intro to tech class, I have seven. Which is good. That's the most I've had. In the construction, I have two. In the AutoCAD and that, up more. We're probably not 50/50 yet.
I was going to ask.
But our goal is to...
Percentage-wise, you're...
The goal is that we make it fun enough that they want to do that.
That was my next question.
Yeah, it's, it's the whole process of, when we start with the CAD, in the intro to, well, I'll go back. In the intro to tech, we're actually building a Sheraton table that all the kids will take home. So, and that's kind of, that'll be our first quarter project. And so they've done the gluing and everything. I think there's a key to getting projects to take home. Where that has not happened, a lot, they haven't taken something what I would consider very usable and very... So we want to get them to take stuff home. The more that we can get them to take stuff home, I think the more we will start to equal our balance out with our classes as far as who's taking it.
That would be good to see, a good balance in the classroom for these types of...
Yeah, and actually, what's kind of funny is the girls... Yeah, and actually what's kind of funny is the girls that are in the intro to tech, they're further along than anybody else. So, because they just get in and kind of, they occupy time very well. So I get them going and then I can get over to the next. But we do have pictures of them on the chop saw and on the joiner and...
Great.
So they're learning that too.
And I would, I hope that home improvement class is a big draw.
It had 28 or 29, we had two classes of it for a semester. So that was good.
But thank you again for joining us.
Well, thank you.
So now we get to move on to our one-to-one program at the middle school. An update on how that is going. And his, Eric and some friends here.
Yep. So while I'm setting up here and getting everything ready, little icing on the cake and another kudos out to Mark, is that his program at tech ed is forging relationships with other departments and classes and everything else. And so even with my department, with technology, he's forging a lot of relationships with that. An example is a project, we're trying to do some upgrades to the auditorium and get things ready for our students and our staff to use and make things better in there. We ran into a problem. We need some custom cabinetry done. And I got to be honest, Matt Carson and I got the price tag and darn near choked on it. And Mark had me kind of walking by, I don't even know if you remember this, and he walked in with a couple of students and kind of needed one of these. And he said, "Guys, don't worry. We got this." I went, "What? You do know there's no right angles on this, right? And, you know, I know they're building it. If any of the students are involved that are here, thank you for doing that because they're kind of saving us a project that we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise. So thank you, Mark, for, for doing that." That's getting him involved with the performing arts, you know, that we're doing and everything else. So it's really forging some great relationships there. So tonight, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Eric Graham, the Technology Director for the district. Here to do the school board requested report on the one-to-one mobile computing initiative over at the middle school. And so what you're seeing right here, just a couple of little video segments, some pictures, images of what's going on in the classrooms over at the middle school and everything, kind of just a hands-on little insight as to what they're doing. I need to thank the students that came in this evening. Thank you, parents, for getting them here tonight. Much appreciated. And their teachers, obviously, for coming in as well. So they're going to show you here in just a moment, kind of what they do, a little bit day-to-day. An apology from Lynn Davies. She feels really horrible about not being here. She had planned to be out of town months ago. And of course, we had the cold weather and that really messed up the schedule as this was supposed to be at an earlier meeting. So she does want to make sure, she feels really bad about not being here tonight to address the board with this. So a little bit quick, the numbers over at the middle school right now. We've deployed out 530 iPads. Knock on some wood, so far, there's zero stolen, zero lost. And I'd love to say zero broken beyond repair, but literally since I wrote this, we had our first completely destructed, I'm not even going to take it to the repair depot to attempt. It's, it's done. So we have one broken beyond repair. So I would have to take that broken screen and probably up at one right there. But right now, we're running about a 1.5% breakage rate. I know that was one of the really big concerns. I'll take that any day of the week. A lot of school districts that surround us that are doing this, they're 6%, 7%, 8% breakage rates on an annual basis. This is where we are at semester break. I'm real happy with that. I can certainly live with that number. I hope you guys can too.
The one that broke, did it have the cover on?
It had the case on it, not fully. It didn't have the front shield on it. It had the rest. It took a 25-foot fall onto concrete. No case was going to protect that. So, yeah, it's, it's done. We are at this time looking for feedback. You know, the rollout beginning year certainly went smoother than we expected. It went smoother than a lot of other districts had. But with that being said, there's always room for improvement. We got things we got to fix. We know that. So at semester break time right now, we've had surveys going out to the parents, to the students, to the teachers. Those are in fact closing this evening. So they've been out now for two weeks. And we pull in a lot of data and what we'll do then is share that out with the administrative team, start looking at all that data and try to make improvements and look at what we got to do for next year to improve this program. Definitely got to say thank you, acknowledgements to obviously the other districts, especially to Milton again. You know, I know this goes out publicly. Hopefully they see and hear this. Because they helped us out huge to avoid a lot of pitfalls that some other districts have had, where they're going through massive breakage rates and thefts and that kind of stuff. So, you know, hopefully they helped us avoid that. So I can sit up here for, you know, the next hour or so and yammer on about this, but that really doesn't do you guys a whole lot of good to the school board. Because this is really about the students and the teachers and what they're doing every day with this. You know, it's not about what I say, it's about what they're doing. So we brought a few students in and their teachers to talk to you a little bit about what they do day in and day out with, with the iPads. Come on up, please, if you would. And if you'll be patient with us, we are going to have to change out some stuff here in the projection system in between each one because they definitely want to show you what they're doing.
Hi, I'm Amy Kapp. I'm the middle, one of the middle school Spanish teachers. Have been there a long, long, long time. So when the whole discussion started with the one-on-one, I'm going to be pretty honest, I was a little panicked. I'm a quick learner and I jumped on board reluctantly, but the support was fantastic. And I think that the planning ahead of time helped to facilitate the process. Foreign language classrooms are noisy places. They're interactive places. Kids are engaged. Kids are applying knowledge. It's not your sit-and-get kind of a class. So I actually felt a little more comfortable knowing that this would lend itself well to our curriculum and for the kids to strengthen those skills. So I've invited Julian Dentez-Kagel to share with you what we've done in our foreign language classrooms to incorporate the technology.
Okay, so this first app, I'm presenting its old sock puppets. And what we did with this is that we got with a partner and we had to write out a whole conversation that we would have with a partner in Spanish. And then we used this app and we kind of, we recorded our voice. And as you'll see, you'll hear our voices, except they don't sound like our voices. They sound strange because of the app. And also, these puppets will move while we were doing this. We were able to move them so we could try to have a little fun with it. So I will show you. So that was a conversation we had. We stated, we said hello, we said our names, we said the weather. We said something we like to do. So I enjoyed this. It, we worked on it a few days. It was all in class. We got to work on it. We wrote out scripts. And then we all were, the whole class was taking turns with going out, recording ourselves and coming back. And then they're almost, with my class, there were very few problems, I think, one or two groups. But they got those remediated. So everything's like, well. The second app I'm going to show you is, well, I guess Corculus. This, we did a project early in the year where we had to make a corkboard about ourselves. So right here, I can show you. This, my Spanish name is Lorenzo this year. So we had to, we had a bunch of different things listed. So I listed these, this is my brothers and myself. I did use an app on the iPad to add in the sombreros. We don't own sombreros. So we did that so that it would help out with that. So I listed some foods I like. I got, I like this app because I could just go on the internet and I could save pictures and then I could easily just put them straight into this thing. And it was very easy to use. We had class time to work on it. And I did use it effectively. And I thought this was a very fun app to use because of how all the different customizations you could do. Because there was no cards, there was like post-it notes you could do. It's almost make it like a real corkboard that you would have to make. So the final app I will be showing is Edmodo. And I mainly use this for Spanish, but I've also used it for one other class and that would be Future Problem Solvers or F P S. And with this, Senora Kapp, she likes to, she puts up questions and she asks us, "Okay, everyone, go on Edmodo and then apply." So everyone, as you can see, I can show you this one. You can see our whole class is replies to this question right here. And then I could simply type in the reply, I could go here and then I could type in my reply. In class, it takes very little time to do if, you know, but with getting the app set up, everything, it's very smooth, fluent, doesn't take much time. I have enjoyed these iPads a lot. I liked having them. I was, once I had started to hear that there would be iPads coming this year, I was super excited. I was like, "Okay, I really want these. I want to see, I want to know what they're going to do with them and see how everything's going to work out." And I thought it worked out very well. Classes are quite simpler. Instead of, I'm going to carry around five textbooks and 30 different folders. I can carry around my iPad and then maybe a book or two to each of my classes. And then everything is loaded on, I can get textbooks, I can get worksheets. And the communication with teachers to students and even students to students has been amazing. I've had where some days I forget what my homework is for one of my classes and it's like, "Oh, gosh, I don't..." And also if I don't know my team, or a teacher's email, just like, "Oh, what do I do now?" With this, I can easily send emails out to my teachers asking, "What, could you please let me know what we had for homework?" Or I could even ask fellow students. And then I can get a reply and lots of the things that I can just do right here on my iPad. I've done projects on the iPad. I have done lots of research with it. I've written papers up on the iPad. And it really helps getting also the communication from teacher to student or me with my fellow students as fluent as it is with iPads. So that's...
Thank you.
My dining table is very excited about these iPads because in the old days, when you had my son, all those projects were glue sticks, poster board, tape cutting, little scraps of paper left over. So, yeah. Too bad.
The iPads, I think they were, they are the right tool. They're, as always, technology is not going to be perfect. Nothing is perfect. But I think that there is a lot more good things with the iPads than there are bad things. I think all the apps that we can find and use to our advantages. And I have actually have had teachers saying, "Okay, if you guys try to use this app, but if you guys find any apps that you think are better or that you can do this easier, go right ahead, let us know about it, show us." And I've even had some things that I had to do where I actually had to look up an app and then kind of explain it. So with as easy as it is to access everything I need, getting the internet, as we say, internet at our fingertips, you can do all this stuff very quickly. We can get it all done in school. We can figure out everything we need for the day in school. We can figure out what we missed during the day. Because if I, say I were sick, I could email my teachers or fellow students and they could say, "Okay, we had this and this and this and then all that." So I find it very helpful.
And can you find apps for all your classes, for all your studies?
Yes, I have. I think I actually have apps for each and every class. I have apps for a bunch of, I sometimes just downloaded apps for projects and then kept the apps so that I could, maybe I could possibly use it for a different class. I do, I know I have had to download a calculator app for my algebra class. We've downloaded, I think, a few apps for science. And we've also, we also use a program called eBackpack. And everything can be stored in there and you can save it. And then I can have all my files. So it's, they're, the teachers put them into folders and then I can save the files to my own, like little files so that I can access them easier. And then, so, yeah, I've used, I've used, for social studies, you've had to do primary sources. So I have used apps for primary sources and also to do different readings out of very different subjects.
Thank you.
How, what was the biggest adjustment you had when you started in September? Because you guys have been at this for, you know, half, a full semester. So what was the biggest adjustment in the beginning?
I think the biggest adjustment was probably the fact that you didn't have to carry around all the textbooks. You had all the textbooks or majority of your textbooks just in your iPad and worksheets. The adjustment was a better adjustment. So I didn't, that's probably all I can find that were new.
And what would you want to improve about it?
There isn't too much that I can think of really.
Something needs to go faster? Something you would like to have that you can't find an app for?
Not really. Everything I've used works pretty well for me. I thought everything worked out very well this year and so far has been going well for me and for my friends and fellow students. It seems like everything's working out just fine with all the apps and everything that's been happening with them. So I don't think there is anything to really change that.
So your friends are finding them effective too? That was going to be my next question. What have the kids have been saying?
Friends, they enjoy them. I actually, we, my friends and I, we all like, because I can communicate my friends with, through the iPads. I can send them emails like hello and we can have conversations and whatnot through them. So I find that very useful, especially if there are friends that I usually can't get in contact with and they go to my school, I can just say, "Okay, well, we both have iPads." So now we can communicate even through the iPad. So...
Are you looking forward to having them possibly next year?
I am, I'm very excited to see, and hope to see them again next year.
Okay, thanks, Julian.
You're welcome.
Any distractions with having them? Or maybe not for you, but do you find the other students having any distractions during like...
Some students, I don't find it much of a distraction. I think that they are an amazing learning tool. I, they've been very useful for me. Lots of different opportunities I can use with them. Lots of different things I can do as substitutes to other things I used to do. I enjoy typing up papers rather than writing them out in hand. So getting to be able, the option to just getting to type it all up right there in school makes it a lot quicker and easier for me. And I also think the organization is a lot more. Instead of having lots of papers and then you try to find one and then you lose another one and then you try to find them and the paper's going to destroy you, ruin your lives. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, let's see, switch around here. Okay, now we're going to hear...
No, no.
Oh, no, no, we have more. Oh, you have more, okay. Never mind. We're still in one-to-one.
I'm Teresa Kovenek. I'm a special ed teacher at the middle school. I teach in the seventh grade this year. It's my second year at Whitnall. Really having a good time, enjoying the iPads. Apart from accessing the curriculum and the benefits that the iPad has for our students, it's been a really awesome tool for organization and helping the students to stay organized and knowing what their homework is and, and how to access that from home. So Dimitri is here and he's going to show you a very useful app that he uses.
A really useful app on the iPad is Calendar Mob. It's essentially like a sign and notebook, but on your iPad. These are all the teachers I'm subscribed to. Some of them I don't have their classes anymore. Some of them I actually put on as a stick. The teachers will post where we had the homework. Go to school and then go to school again. But it's like we're just, we have to get ready for the test on Monday. So that's what they posted up on there.
So it's color-coded, okay, okay, it's color-coded by the course?
Yep. But it's not the same for everyone. They just have like a certain color for everyone. Because before I would use to bring this everywhere. We didn't have like a certain time to write everything down this. So I would always have to like hurry up, scribble it down. My parents couldn't read my writing, so they had to email this Kovenek and it was just a big hassle. And I used to bring my phone in, take pictures of what we had to do. But now that I have an iPad, I don't have to bring my phone anymore. I just have this.
So you find it very useful, huh? Great.
What grade are you in, young man?
Seventh.
Seventh grade? So this is your first year with the iPad?
Yep.
And besides your calendar mode, what have you, what have you used? And besides your calendar mode, what have you, what have you used to help you benefit? What have you learned on it?
Well, I've already used e-Backpack, that's really hard, cause I actually just started getting familiar with it, cause there are some bugs in mine I had to fix. But other than that, it was pretty easy.
And have your fellow classmates and your friends, are they enjoying it?
Yeah, they're enjoying it.
Are they learning from it?
Hmm, let's just say they have more games than.
And we chuckle. Games are useful tools. Do you have games on yours?
Uh, no.
You don't have any games on yours?
Nope, yeah.
It's okay to put a couple games on there, buddy.
Well, it depends on mom.
I know. Just got my school stuff.
Just your school stuff?
Yep.
Do you go to it every day, all day?
Yep.
Do you? Your parents like you having it? They comfortable with you learning on it?
I don't know.
Mom, dad?
Mom can weigh in.
Mom is just, I don't know about her, but dad seems a little fine with it.
I think mom's okay with it too, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Youngman.
I'm gonna be introducing Gabby LaFlore, I'm Scott Seemers. Before I do that though, I just wanted to give a little shout out to Mr. Grant and Mrs. Kaiser because you couldn't have two better people implement this on the face of the earth. Let me just give you a quick example. About two weeks ago, we wanted to get a grammar app for the kids because there was some gaps that they really needed to fill in. We, Mrs. Droste, I'm sitting down with Mrs. Droste, we're like, hey, we really need to get an app. We emailed Mr. Grant. I, within an hour, not only did he say yeah, but he gave us the redemption codes for two hundred of the apps. Every kid in seventh grade has one. We called Mrs. Kaiser and, or just emailed her, hey, when you get a chance in the next couple days, could you stop by and show us how to, the best way to get these redemption codes out to the kids? Ten minutes later, she's in there, told us what to do. It was, it was great. Gabby's gonna be talking about her, her online journal, basically. In the past, we've, whenever students come into language arts class, they always have a little quote on the board to get them going, you know, classic painting, something to get them thinking and writing, so that we can say every day that the kids write in language arts class. And so Gabby's gonna be showing her online journal.
Okay, so, hi, my name's Gabby and I'm in seventh grade and, but this is for us for language arts. And last year, what we had to do was every day, like right when we got to class, there would be something on the whiteboard or smartboard, and we would have to pull out our notebooks and then we would have to like write a response to it, like if it was a question, you write a question, or if it's like a picture, we'd write our thoughts down, and that would take probably like ten minutes, cause it takes more time to write manually. And then what we do this year is we write it online, so it takes probably half the amount of time that it took last year. So it gives more time to learn in class. And then these are just some of the things that I wrote about. That's like the ones from when we were reading The Upsiders. And I think it like teaches you like a lot more responsibility, because last year, like, it was like, oh, if the notebook rips, it rips, I don't care. And then what happened is if this year, like, it's an iPad, so it's way more extensive, so it was like, I have to take care of it. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Are we able to read some of your thoughts, or?
Yeah.
Cause you keep flipping.
I'm old and it's far away, so I can't see. I just wanna say. I like this green one. I did highlight that one. Using your iPad, research the most popular books of the 1960s. So I, I like that it was just not even, it was very interactive, so you're not just writing, you're actually having to go in and get, and pull the information down.
Yeah, like it took a, like I could not find that many books that were popular. I just looked in a little thing on Google.
We read in the sixties.
All the books up here were in the sixties.
Just so you know.
I have a question. What did you do with the extra time? If you have more time in the classroom, what are you finding you do with that?
What we do is we're, I'm in FPS, so for what we do in language arts is we kind of like go through all the six steps in class, and like that extra hour for class like makes it a lot easier like to understand things. And then like, yeah.
So you can under, it makes it easier to understand, you have more time to learn, and you're more responsible.
Yeah.
Those sound like really good things. Thank you. Really good things.
Any other questions from the board?
Really nice presentation.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have we done a survey of our teachers that we, we've got results yet? That's what I just mentioned at the beginning.
You're doing one now.
We just did one now.
Right.
So we just pulled all that information literally.
I guess my question to you is, what questions did you ask?
I can show you guys.
That would be great. I'd like to see what question you asked.
Cause you surveyed teachers, parents, and students.
And students.
So we should.
All the way, and they're all separate, each survey is separate, although they ask generally the same questions. The same questions are asked each, except we tweak the end of it just a little bit to address the different audience.
Could you, yeah, I'd love to see the results. And then the final giving block.
No, I'm sure.
Well, you'll do a summary for us.
Well, I'm sure. I mean, cause it's really, it's a useful tool, but I guess, where do they see it going? Cause they'd mentioned, one of the kids had mentioned they have a couple textbooks they're still carrying around. Are we moving away from that when it comes to the one to one?
Well, that's something I'll be happy to share with you guys once we get all the data, but I've already got a list of takeaways from the survey, good and bad, pros and cons. One of them, a big one, across from both parents and students, is abundantly clear, get me to digital materials as quickly as you can.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Why am I still carrying around thirty pounds of textbooks?
Well, that's my point.
Like very quickly. I mean, that was a comment probably given over a hundred times. So, you know, there's certain takeaways that we'll pull out and work to the board and everything.
But some of that, the kids are already ahead of that and they've already found a workaround for it, because, because they're, because they're camera enabled.
Right.
What the kids have done is for math class, some of them have had, get really good light, spread the textbook out really flat, and then they take a picture of the page that the assignment is on, and the clarity of the picture is good enough that they can read everything and all the problems. So they're leaving the math book in the locker and using it in class as a resource, but their homework is coming at home as a photograph on their iPad.
Right.
So the kids are using that even as a workaround when they still have a textbook in the room.
But, and, and, because I've been looking at the kids that work for me now too.
Yeah.
None of them walk in, they all just, kid walked in last night, clicked the calendar, walked out, and went, what are you doing? He's taking a picture from his schedule.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You know, cause we don't think, we don't think that way.
And that's second nature to them.
Exactly. And that's what I was driving, and that's why I was gonna ask you the question, is the survey, is, cause we don't think the way they think.
Right.
Because what we're teaching them doesn't exist yet.
And we try to leave the survey open and, what do you think needs to be improved?
Okay.
What would you like to see down the road? Kind of thing, and try to do a lot of narrative response on that.
Okay, thank you.
And I know I've had some parents address some concerns with.
Absolutely.
Games, chatting, access to maybe applic, I mean, I know there's safety guards in there, so we don't download things that are mature, but are the, are the kids getting around that? Do we check at all to make sure that the apps that they have on there are appropriate?
Yeah, we've been doing random inspections, and then this next week, actually, on this Wednesday, not next week, this Wednesday, we are pulling in every iPad. We're pulling in every student, every iPad, doing a little refresher, some digital citizenship courses, training, that kind of thing, and pulling that in.
But I gotta be careful with that, because the law's changed. We're not responsible for a lot of that anymore.
Right, we are responsible for some stuff.
For some stuff.
Right. And it, and it really comes down to when they're on our network, what content, absolutely apps, content are they accessing?
Are they able to access?
Yeah, and that's up, we've done a pretty good job from blocking, but again, I'll bring the survey stuff, you know, to another meeting if you'd like and do a report on that. But, you know, what, the survey led us in one direction, coming through and said, wow, we missed a block and we found it, and we, you know, patched that up, the one we thought we had fun back in August.
This just seems the direction. If we're gonna flip our classrooms as we keep hearing about and get to where we're facilitating learning, we need these tools. And that's what I thought I heard through every presentation was, was now I'm allowed to, even in the technical career presentation, that I can, I can learn on my own. Teachers are creating the environment and we're creating these tools for teachers, and then the students can more explore and learn on their own. I love that. I love hearing that.
And we're gonna have growing pains. I mean, that's, we have to acknowledge in fact, we're not gonna get it right right out of the gate. This is a massive change that we have coming. It's starting now, we started a little grain of change, but it's gonna take a couple years and we're gonna have to grow and see it through.
Well, that's how we're living in the real world today. I mean, maybe some of us older ones aren't as technically savvy, but I sure think that's, we're modeling now what the way the world is.
But the technology we have in our hands right now is already antiquated.
Doesn't matter, we, we, we take it and we use it, and we prepare them to figure it out.
Figure out how to move forward.
To be comfortable with the change as it comes, right?
Well, one thing that Eileen hit on at the finance meeting was content, curriculum content, and young Mr. Cagle and many other ones really, I think, answered some of those questions.
It is being, you know.
For us, cause we were concerned was, are they just using it for the calendar? Are they just using it to communicate with, you know, teachers? But as Mr. Young Cagle said, you know, he's actually using it and many other students are using it for educational purposes, and that, that really helps us feel more comfortable moving forward with the high school.
And it's not like the curriculum they're learning is that different, it's just how they're, how they're learning it, you know? Like I, you know, I saw that same exercise come home with, you know, scissors and paper versus now we're doing it, you know, the way you're going to do it in the business world, you know, or in the, in the real world. So, okay.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Great, thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, now, PBIS, Hills Corners Elementary. We didn't plan all these in the, in the same night, just so you know what the weather.
Planned, you know, forty degrees below zero.
Thank you for staying with us.
It's not past our bedtime yet. We're good, we're all good. Thanks for, actually, thank you for inviting us. We were happy to be able to come tonight and, and give you an overview of how our PBIS journey has been going since the beginning of the school year. I've come along with nine, I'm one of ten members of our PBIS Tier One team at HCE, and I'm just gonna let them introduce themselves with their, their role at the school as well.
Hi, I'm Lynn Kuherzky. I'm a fifth grade classroom teacher.
I'm Cindy Corral. I teach first grade.
My name is Chrissy Russ, I'm a physical counselor.
I'm Kathy Westfall and I am the external coach, which means I do not, am not part of the school on a daily basis.
I'm Shane Glenn, I'm a general music teacher.
I'm Mary Edgert, I'm the library media aide.
I'm Sue Pearson, special ed instructional aide.
And Carrie Eatsler, specialized teacher.
And our internal coach is Alison Schnorr. She's a second grade teacher. She's not here this evening, she's home with an ailing husband. And basically Alison's job is to just make sure that we're integrating, or that we're implementing with integrity, the PBIS philosophies, and she's there as internal every day, day to day, so kind of keeps us on our toes. And so, we're gonna get underway with a little slideshow and bring you through the process.
Good, so to get you started, if you guys want to take a look at your binders that we've laid out for you, all of our staff has a copy of this, this is what we used for training. If you could open your binders to the tablet tab, here you'll find our PBIS purpose statement. Again, PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. These bullets describe what you, what we are aiming to do.
And you've seen the, the triangle before, the RTI triangle, you heard about, response to intervention, typically from an academic standpoint, that's the left side of the triangle. And we've talked to you, I know I've stood before you plenty of times, talking about reading and math interventions. The right side of the triangle is the behavioral side, and what we're working on is that big gigantic green portion, the Tier One section, which is really about all students, all settings, and what we're doing across the entire school to be preventative and be proactive.
This is a list of various accomplishments throughout our school this year. As a team and as a whole school, we really have hit the ground running. And so one of the first things we had to do was to develop a school, a set of schoolwide expectations in all of the different settings within the school day at HCE.
So we started by developing three expectations for our students to follow across the board, and they are to be safe, to be respectful, and to be responsible. And then we took a look at our school and figured out we had about ten different settings that students would be demonstrating these behaviors. So we really carefully delineated exactly what that would look like in each of those settings, and made posters like this for students to reference in each setting. And you'll see the voice level, we have a voice level system, zero through four, to help students understand what level their voice should be at in each of the different settings.
We then took those poster ideas, and keep in mind, when creating those, we had to think about children from ages in K four up through fifth grade. So would everybody be able to understand what was being put on those posters? And then we developed and taught explicit lessons to those students in all of those different settings.
So in the binders, under the pink tab, you'll see the example of the poster, and then you'll see where the lesson plans start. So we took the posters and we made lesson plans for each of the settings and helped our teachers to teach our students the lesson plan. And the important parts that, of the lesson plans is that we included all students, part of, a big part of PBIS is that you don't assume the students really know anything, you really explicitly teach all the behaviors you want to see, and we taught them in the setting and what, that we wanted them performed in.
Of course, when you have expectations, and even though you teach the lessons and things are posted and we revisit those as we see need, there are going to be times when students aren't gonna follow those expectations, and so we needed to delineate both major and minor behavior violations and what those would look like.
So in the green tab, you'll see this T chart that's divided into adult manage, like staff manage behaviors, and then principal manage behaviors. And this is included in our handbook, so I think you guys have seen this before. But we wanted to do this just to make it really clear and consistent across all the different teachers and staff members that are working with our students, and we really use the board call sheet as our guideline to make sure that we are hitting on all the different expectations for our students. And we wanted to make sure that this was easy to use and really consistent, so our students knew exactly what to expect from us.
And as a next step with that, we then had to create a new behavior expectation violation report. So when something did happen, when there was a violation, what then would stem from that and the documentation and procedures that followed?
So we developed this form together, and what happens is the staff member who sees the behavior violation, uses this form to communicate it, and we track the violation, which expectation was violated, the location, and then the two behaviors, you'll see the minor behaviors or the major behaviors listed on the bottom there. And we really wanted this to be something that would be a really streamlined use for us, so we could be really consistent when we look at our data. So when we have this data, we can really clearly see and disaggregate where things are happening, when they're happening, which students, and use that to inform things in the future.
And that's exactly what Carrie was leading into, that we could, spent a lot of time also, and we continue to do so, to collect data on the positive behaviors and also the behavior violations.
So this is just an example of some of the data that we shared with our staff and that we're going to continue to share with our staff as we get more data. And, you know, just examining this, you can see how many violations occurred in what month, where they occurred, sorry, that's a little bit cut off. This is in the binder, though, I think it's the second to last page, if you want to see a little closer. And this just gives us the opportunity to see where we need to reteach those behaviors and kind of do some problem solving and be more proactive with our instruction with our kids.
Along with all of that, you of course want to work on developing procedures and specific acknowledgement systems to reinforce all those good, positive behaviors that this is really aiming for. And that's been a really fun part of it too. In addition to that, they kind of go hand in hand then, that the, all along the way, we've been training the rest of the staff to also implement the program. We are not the only people that do it, of course.
What you're seeing there is the Hills Corners falcon feather, and the falcon feather was developed by the team to be the primary acknowledgement of following the expectations. So when a staff member observes a student. So when a staff member observes a student following the behavior expectations, they are given a falcon feather. And then the falcon feathers are used, we use them to keep track of how many acknowledgements are given, so that we know the positive behaviors that are being acknowledged. And then there are others, we use those falcon feathers also for some other acknowledgements, which you'll see in a second.
So we had our PBIS kickoff on September 6th, which we would like to share with you just a, a brief video about that. And you, you are now receiving what our students received on September 6th. It was a big day. You get a chance to see our video. At the kickoff, we explained to the students the importance of being safe, respectful, and responsible. We also shared with them that as they are earning these falcon feathers, they have an opportunity to earn in all school, that they were part of an all-school acknowledgement system. And that not only are they working hard to earn falcon feathers for themselves, but it's really important that they support their classmates because the good of the whole affects the whole. And so we were very excited to share with them that our very first goal was to earn 2,000 falcon feathers. And we were very pleased that we actually earned that goal, reached that goal by the end of September. And so we had an all-school celebration where we had an all-school quick dance to the music celebration. Then by mid-October, we earned 10,000 falcon feathers, where we had the opportunity of earning our all-school goal, which was a crazy half-day. And we currently are working towards the goal of 20,000 falcon feathers. What you see in front of you is our thermometer that's right outside of the school office. The students can then see how close we are to reaching our goal. The other way that students can earn reinforcements for their acknowledgements is that towards the beginning of the year, students can turn in their falcon feathers for periodic events or different things. And what you're seeing right there are experiential sort of acknowledgement or experiential experiences, where the students can earn opportunities to put their falcon feather into a raffle and have the opportunity of having lunch with a teacher or doing, having different game days with different individuals. And so that's been very popular. So those are some of the things that the students are earning with their falcon feathers. In addition, we are now preparing what we're calling our Falcon Market. Right below the bulletin board there, you'll see the PBIS giving tree. We started at the beginning of the year, asking for the support from parents and staff to be able to donate any items that we had on the giving tree, where students then can take their, the falcon feathers that they are earning. They've actually even put together little wallets in their, in their class that they're kicking all their falcon feathers in. And then they will have an opportunity to come to our Falcon Market and turn in their falcon feathers for a whole variety of things. Everything from pencils, erasers, you know, books, all sorts of things.
So you might wonder what's next for us. We're gonna be finalizing classroom expectations, reteaching lessons as needed. We're gonna expand our acknowledgement procedures like the Falcon Market, which will be opening on Thursday, which is pretty exciting. Also continuing our activity raffles. We will be using our data to inform our future decisions and continued staff development for sustainability. So thank you so much for your time. And if you have any questions for us, we'll be here.
Does the program coincide with the middle school program?
I should've said that from the get-go, because we really should acknowledge the work that they've done. When we went through our training, I was emailing Mrs. Davies and, you know, doing a couple of phone calls, because they use the safe, respectful, responsible. They put it in a different order. You know, sometimes teenagers pre-teens, they have a little bit different order. We start with safe, they start, I think, with respectful. But we still have the same three. The voice system, we had already at HCE had a three-level voice system, but we changed ours to follow suit for theirs, so that our kids would have a smooth transition. So we went to a four, four-level system as well. So yes, they have, they're at tier-two implementation or training and implementation right now, and we're, we're following, you know.
The kids will be, will move right into that?
Well, I think very smoothly. I think our systems are really, while they might have some nuances, like Lynn referenced about, you know, the difference between four and 11-year-olds as they move into the middle of school years, slightly different situations though. But I'm certain it's gonna be a really smooth transition for our kids.
I was able to take you up on your offer. I volunteered at the knowledgeathon, and the first question is, for the first points, is what are the three behaviors? And I had two fourth-grade groups and two fifth-grade groups, and they, they all got their point. I know the basics.
It's everywhere. They can't help but see it. Implementation is a three-to-five-year project, so it's not something that, you know, this is just the beginning of, of the journey, and that's why it was this term. So middle school's a year or two of us, because they've had it in, in place for one year, right?
So what's the biggest change you've noticed? I know you've only really had half a year with this, but what's the biggest change you've noticed in the student body and behavior?
Always. Always our quieter, more orderly transitions.
I think we've had guest teachers come in this year that have worked with our kids in the past, and they'll say unsolicited, wow, the kids are really different this year. The hallways seem quieter. They know what's expected. And I think that really speaks a lot.
I think it's really all of us having the same language with the kids. I mean, it's no different than, you know, dad and mom at home, you know, as a kid, which one you could, you know, go to for whatever you needed. But at, at school, I mean, we're really speaking the same language, and we're holding that same level of accountability with the kids. And I think if you, if you think back of what you heard the other two presentations tonight, from the one-on-one initiative, we want kids to be able to take ownership themselves. So we need to set up an environment that they can feel really, that they know the rules, they know what's expected, and that they can move and fly within that environment. So... And who doesn't like a pat on the back? So that's, that's another good caveat to it as well. I think it's helped us be a little more, just generally speaking, a little more positive, too.
Can I tag on to that? What, how has it impacted student achievement?
That's really a good question, but I don't know that we have the, like, empirical data to say, guess what, test scores went up by, I mean, not yet.
May not be test scores, just...
We're at a relief point of implementation.
What's your sense, though?
They encourage each other more. They're supportive of each other more, because that's respectful.
Okay.
And I think other school districts that have implemented this have seen academic achievement growth. That's something that we learned about when we went to our trainings at SISA, is that other schools are seeing that. So yeah, we're hoping that our data will show that.
Well, just time. I mean, if you're spending less time on discipline, if it's, you should be having more time in the classroom than for learning. I would expect that would be sort of one of those other ways you can tell it's making a positive. I also want to take a minute to thank all of our wonderful teachers. You don't get a chance to do that very often for what you do for our kids every day and our administrators. So thank you for, for your everyday work. So that was my only question.
And thanks for our falcon feather. My first one.
You can drop it in the box. Drawings might be held tomorrow. Put it to the front of the school.
I didn't get one.
Yes, you did.
I'm only kidding.
I was gonna say, there's a reason.
That's respectful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Okay, now we're moving right along into educator effectiveness updates.
Well, that's a bunch of tough acts to follow to now go into educator effectiveness.
We cleared the room, Tony.
Yes. Pretty typical. Thanks, Mike. I appreciate that. I just wanted to throw up some pictures. This is from today. This is the staff development that we went through today about educator effectiveness. And what's unique about this whole, the whole afternoon, actually as well as the morning, is that all of our staff development was designed by teachers for teachers. You don't see principals or consultants or any fancy-pancy suits at the front of the room. You see teachers working with teachers and really developing an understanding around educator effectiveness and what it all stands for. So again, I just think pictures are worth a thousand words and, sorry, Lori. So sometimes you never know what those candidates, it just kind of captures the moment. Sorry. It's all good. So if I can start moving, step around here. My computer seems to have frozen up.
Did you get your iPad?
Did you have any specific questions while I'm trying to get this thing unfrozen?
Well, I do. I, I just want to comment on it a couple of things. It's really great to get the information, to see how we're moving forward on this, because our teachers in the classroom are the most important factor in changing student achievement and improving student performance. So I thought this information, even this one sheet, was really, really helpful in seeing which direction we're going and what our timelines are. So I thought, I wanted to thank you for that, to the committee. Thank you, Tony, for this work. And Lowell, thanks for, for spearheading this, because we went to a conference last fall and learned some of this stuff as well. So it's great to see us implementing this in our district. So I don't, I do, I look forward to seeing how you're going to, I guess, our, the board's role is maybe looking at student learning objectives. That, to me, seems like somehow that should be tied to our district goals, I guess, Tony. That's, that's sort of my question here, looking at the future. What, what role do we have and how can we connect it to make sure we're getting the results in this district that are related to our overall mission and the goals that we set? That's my question. And I think that's the board's role, more so than the details of how you do it, but...
Well, the board's role is actually to set policy to govern our improvement practices. So I would say the board would have no, no bearing on student learning outcomes. That's for the teachers to set in conjunction with their building.
We might have some disagreements on that.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the model and the way that it's set up, it's, that's, that's what it's designed to be.
Well, this, this low, the classroom level, yes. But I'm talking district. A link to that, to the district level. The district level goals that we set, which is not...
Yeah.
Yeah, there should be, is what I'm thinking. Right?
Okay.
That was my...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand. Student learning outcomes are what teachers specifically write regarding their students.
In their classroom?
School learning outcomes are what principals write regarding their teachers' efforts.
Okay. That's what I needed clarification on.
Yep. So the board, the board's role wouldn't be in either one of those situations as they're very specific for that particular. The board's role is facilitating that leadership development around, around, making sure that in fact, like you said, sitting at the broader goal.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
The overall goals, you know, those specific learning objectives are gonna feed into that.
Right.
So you set that here, the individual teachers then set the, it's very much a flattened management style, which we've been doing here for the last couple of years. We're trying to, it was a great teacher in-service today. I presented for, what, maybe two and a half minutes, three minutes at the, the big gathering in the auditorium. And then I sat back and watched our teachers do the things that Tony's gonna be showing you. And the feedback from the teachers was outstanding. I mean, even the emails coming in saying it's the best in-service they've had in years and years and years, and that's from some teachers who've been around a really long time. Because they could say years and years and years.
Tony, we're taking the Wisconsin educators effectiveness model and making it the Whitnall. We're customizing it for us?
Um, you cannot, well, I, I guess, the rollout is customized. You cannot cust, you don't customize the model. The state gives us exactly the parameters around which we are to, I guess, the form needs to be standard per the state. The way they're rolling out is our customization. So some districts have, administrators lead the charge and just give everybody the information and do a little bit of training. Some districts, like us, have relied on a leadership team of teachers to say, how do we best roll this out to each other and, and take a collective approach.
So the information is universal?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, and so that was the whole idea, was that there's consistency statewide around how exactly educators are evaluated. And by educators, that's not just teachers, it's principals, too. So... This is just the, what we, we talked about this morning, and the only reason that I brought it in here is that the state had talked about, that Tony Evers had set goals, called it Agenda 2017, and said these are the four main focus areas. And what we talked about with staff was that in fact, at Whitnall, long before Tony Evers came along, we were already starting to focus on a lot of these things. So his first goal was what and how kids should learn, standards and instruction, and some things that we've already put into place and we've been working with. Our staff development around the common core, learning target development, our curriculum database, which is probably about eighty percent complete. Eric and I met with him last week about that. We did classroom instruction that works in the art and science of teaching, two book studies that we did over the summer. And we employed the K-12 coordinators to facilitate the development of those standards and instruction. The second piece he talked about was how do we know if students learned it? And what he was referring to, Tony Evers, when he brought this out, was a more standardized approach to education. So from a global standpoint, we have the ACT, we have math, we have PALS testing and monitoring, and we use that data in our classrooms. But more importantly, we have common assessment development, benchmark assessment development locally here at the site. So we have kind of a triangulation of saying, this is data that comes from the outside, and this is the data that we have from the inside, where the two, where do they meet? And that's where the personalization really comes into play. The last piece, how do we ensure that students have highly effective teachers in schools? We want to put into place a system that measures that, and then we can communicate and set goals that are meaningful. But so far, we've already made strides toward that. Again, classroom instruction that works, the art and science of teaching are the two books that we did book studies. But we do already have in place annual evidence-based goal setting. This district has had it in place for a very long time. So it's part of the educator effectiveness model. It's nothing new. We've been doing it. Classroom walkthroughs, there's been monitoring. Not only principals walk through classrooms, but teachers walk through each other's classrooms. We have that going on. That's what's not very common in too many places. The collaboration structures and opportunities that we have built into place, the adjustments that we've made to that in order to accommodate our goals, have been very important and specific. And then lastly, the teacher directive and teacher-led educator effectiveness training and standard development. It's all about making sure that this is meaningful for all of our teachers, all of our principals, so that as we move forward, it's not something that is on the surface, but in fact, something that is meaningful. So all that stuff had me thinking. How in the world does this all come together? So we have six major things that are going on right now. We talk about best practices in the classroom, that's classroom instruction that works. We talk about learning targets, development, playing with the common core and the standards, figuring that whole thing out, database decision-making, and the development of common assessments. And most of the time, it looks like this. Sometimes they overlap. Sometimes they go off page. Sometimes they disappear. Sometimes they come back. The challenge is how exactly do we start working smarter rather than simply harder? So that's when we started looking at culture. And about three years ago, the admin team sat down and we really talked about how do, how in fact do we build a professional learning community? And the idea of a professional learning community is that since we all hold each other accountable and we're all in this together, we start to see the motion of all of this stuff that's going on a bit more limited. And we start narrowing the scope so that we become a bit more focused in what we're doing. Although some things still kind of drift away every once in a while and come back, they're still exist and they still cross over more frequently. So the model that seemed to make sense to me, and hopefully it makes sense to all of you, is one where you think of a basic Venn diagram, that you have these six different lenses that are going on. And in the middle of that whole piece is kind of our most important and most successful components. The professional learning community keeps us focused. It keeps those circles overlapping. It keeps us working within certain boundaries. We can't, as administrators, run around and supervise everything that's going on all the time. It doesn't make any sense. But in fact, if we as teachers, as educators, are constantly involved in a dialogue in regulating ourselves and keeping ourselves on track and focused, then in fact, those circles stay close together. Ultimately, what we're looking for is that zone of maximum effect, where everything crosses over. It gives us that direct purpose. So how does this work with educator effectiveness? Here's our current reality. There's our preferred future. That's our vision. Educator effectiveness is about saying, well, let's look at what we're currently doing. Let's look at where we want to be and start designing some plans and trying some things out that may very well start moving us toward that preferred future. So this is the model that we were, to me, it made the most sense as far as visual representation of how exactly educator effectiveness... representation of how exactly educator effectiveness fits into this, this piece. It engages us in a process of looking at where we currently are, where we want to be, and then making adjustments. We've been doing that, the Plan Do Study Act model has been, actually, it's the basis for our strategic plans, if you look. So, it's nothing new, it's just doing it with a specific vocabulary, similar to what you heard from PBIS, where I'll be speaking the same language. Principals, teachers, everyone within the building, and, and within the district. So, again, it comes back to that PLC, that circle, kind of pushing us all closer together. So, that is the best that I can do at eight fifteen at night after following a whole bunch of really great kid presentations, just to give you a, a fun little model that moves around. So, part of what I had talked about today, and anytime I can, um, involve my kids in presentations, I'll do that, but have you all learned to roller skate at some point or another? Hopefully. There's some young faces in the out of town today that I don't know that they really knew what roller skating was, something in rollerblading, I don't know, you know, something other than that. But I learned to roller skate, you know, pretty much probably the same as many of you. You fall down a bunch of times or you run into your friends and you soon learn how to balance and all that great stuff. Well, my two daughters were invited to a roller skating party, and now they have this neat new contraption. Alyssa, my oldest one on the left there, is the typical oldest child who has to have control quite often and doesn't take too many risks, likes to be perfect in everything she does. Her, the next, um, Abby on the right there, her younger sister, doesn't worry about rules and doesn't really worry about taking risks. She's the one that'll just, off she goes. And I started thinking about, as I saw them at this party, our staff is much the same way. Some people are completely ready for this educator effectiveness thing and ready to just run out there and bump into their friends and learn how to take this whole model out. Other ones are very hesitant, like Alyssa, and really would benefit from a nice PVC little structure around them before they get going. Ultimately, we want to make sure that two hours into the party, everybody's having fun. And that's the whole idea behind the educator effectiveness. That's why we have a teacher leader team, that's why we give them the authority to, to make this happen, because they are the ones who really know their colleagues, they know where they need to be, they know the language that we need to use so that we can make sure that everybody is moving forward with the educator effectiveness. So, the documents that I sent you, um, we always have to feature Eric and his, his mighty record, because it's a great thing. Um, we talked about the fact that, uh, similar to what Eric has, uh, caused his team to accomplish, we as teachers cannot function in isolation, that we in fact have to work together no matter what, um, to keep our heads above water, to keep ourselves, our entire bodies above water, uh, in some cases, and really, um, building ourselves into our future. So, that's what we talked about, uh, today as we move forward. And you saw on the packets, there are two key resources that I would encourage you to check out. One is the one pager electronically, it has links on paper, the links don't work, so probably want to go online. Uh, and the other one is I put together a, I think it's up to like four hundred and seventy pages now, binder.
That is overkill.
It's a PDF, um, but if you open the PDF, click on the little Adobe icon, and you'll get a bookmark bar on the side, and click on that, and it's actually divided by all the topics that are in there, so you don't have to actually scroll through the whole thing, you can go to the topics that you want, and you'll see in there, we have all the evaluation stuff for principals, for teachers, the two PowerPoints that we, um, had today going on, so, um, everything that you could possibly want there is there, and there will be more added as we go through that whole piece. So, as far as the overview is concerned, um, we had the leadership team meet, they planned the rest of the year to roll this thing out. Uh, each team talked to their staff at their individual staff meetings in their buildings and introduced this whole thing and said, this is coming. And today, we just had a, a great time this afternoon working in, um, by buildings and looking at, how do we get our heads wrapped around this? So, we've just kind of rolled out the model and gotten used to the vocabulary that's being used, and as the year goes on, we're going to, each month, have a staff meeting, at a staff meeting, cover a different component of the educator effectiveness model.
Tony, how will this impact our classrooms? How will it impact what's going on in the classroom?
Um, I would, I would imagine it, it should be positive because what we're, we're asking, the one thing is that it's a, it's, I wouldn't say that our, we're not, I want to be careful in saying that it's not as though we didn't have meaning in our evaluation system before, but it wasn't an ongoing process. This process is much more of a team approach. Though it is evaluative in nature, um, it is all about working together, so there's coaches involved and other colleagues, they can set goals as an entire team. So, let's say all the math teachers in the sixth grade wanted to set a goal, they can set that goal together and support each other and have a common dialogue around how exactly do we get these students to be successful on this particular vein. So, um, obviously, we would hope to see that more of the collaboration and the discussions that are going on at a classroom level will be centered very specifically around a particular group of students.
And resources will be easier to get at, right? Because there's that online TeachScape or something in addition to what you do every day here?
Yeah, TeachScape is the, is the software that will house this whole process. So, instead of it being on paper, you have-
That should be helpful.
TeachScape is the one that houses it. Um, just as a sidebar, all the, everyone in the, the district administrators who are going to be evaluating teachers go through, um, between sixty and eighty hours of training that we'll have to complete between now and September first of next year on our own to, uh, be certified to then evaluate staff. So, they have us go through and look at the modules and the framework that's in there and really develop an understanding and some commonality and understanding around what we're looking for when we go to classrooms.
If we would go to a performance pay system for the teachers, would this be the basis for it?
Um, the state, as well as all of their, our organizations have recommended that there's not be linked in any way whatsoever to, to performance pay, um, because it's aimed individually at, um, student goals, it's based upon student goals, and it's not representative of all that necessarily that teachers are doing. Those goals are aimed at a specific population that has been identified as one in need. So, the idea of the process is not that you meet your goal or exceed your goal, but in fact, that you set your goal, monitor how you're doing in relation to it, and then make modifications in order to, to teach students, so.
And, and the one that we all sent around, uh, from the, uh, WSAB conference, that's exactly what they did. That's how they modeled it, and this is how they've gone together to do it with collaboration of teachers, administrator, superintendent, parents. Um, that's why it sounds really familiar. I'm sure that they say, don't use it, I don't, you know, but when you look at, if you really read and you look at that, um, presentation, that's how they rated the teachers and that's how they gave the performance pay. So, but I'm glad that you mentioned that, that this is not what they want you to do with it.
Yeah, there's actually in the PDF binder near the back somewhere, in the, there's a part that says communications and outreach. There's a letter from WASB, WAAC, um, the state superintendent, WAS, uh, WASB, every CLASA, I mean, every organization, they jointly released a statement and they talk in there very specifically about the fact that, um, this process is designed for us to, as a growth model and not necessarily for something that's based upon that. So, it's, it's in there if you want to check it out.
It's kind of an oxymoron because it's educator effectiveness designed to measure the effectiveness of the educators and it's an evaluation process. If you're doing pay for performance, what are you doing? You know, and so it's kind of a catch twenty-two. And I understand why, if DPI wouldn't want you to tie the two together, and that's, um, when teachers are all talking the same language, they all have a level playing field, and they're, they all understand this, you know, we, we talked about that, uh, you know, at one of our other meetings, um, that's probably a more appropriate time to, to implement it. Otherwise, you're directly clashing with what DPI said not to do. However, you and I both know there's, you're going to see how well somebody does something evaluating them for increases.
Tony, is it going to be like the fifty-fifty split? We heard about somewhat their evaluation fifty percent on practices in the classroom and fifty percent on the student learning organizations. Is that how you see it happening here?
Um, the model, yeah, the model is, is technically fifty-fifty.
Okay.
Fifty percent is based upon the Danielson framework of teaching. Um, the other fifty percent is student data, however, of that student data, only four percent of it is actually based on testing. The other forty-six percent that will be remaining is based upon district benchmarks and common assessments. So, um, only four percent would be related to value-added test scores.
Yeah, see, that's a shift we have to make in our understanding is how, how do we assess our kids? Because it isn't all about test scores anymore. It's just not. We have to move beyond that, don't we, Tony? Find ways to look at, are our kids prepared when they leave the system? Kind of the big picture stuff. And how do we measure that? How do we know that the programs we're giving them today are preparing them?
Looking in the binder, um, because this was just an overview, so I didn't come prepared to teach the actual educator effectiveness system. But if you go into binder and you can see we had a, a presentation today, the, the building one, it actually has that, and here's your system balancing right here. So, it's the presentation. I'd be more than happy to-
No, I don't need.
Go to that. Feel free to do that. It's much, it's, it's a complex thing. I mean, it really is a very complex thing. That's why we're rolling it out over, you know, over six months and we're involving a whole bunch of people because, um, we really got to make sure that we do this right and we roll it out the way that it should be.
Are new teachers coming out of our colleges with this? Or are we having to retrain them?
I will, uh, to be really honest, it's funny that you ask. We currently have five, six, five or six student teachers at the high school, and, um, Jackie asked them to go around and observe multiple teachers, so I went and met with all them afterwards. I heard there were sandwiches, so I showed up. And, um, I asked them that exact question, and they were from five different schools in the area, and not one of them had heard anything about educator effectiveness, nor have they heard about PDPs and how to do that.
Okay.
Of those five schools-
So, we have to retrain them?
They are the very reputable ones, um, the cutting-edge ones. So, um, you know, again, I don't know exactly what that means, so what I told them was I would offer them a crash course in this whole thing. Actually, they were all at today's, um, this afternoon's staff room, so they all learned a lot.
And we'll be ready for the twenty fourteen, fifteen school year?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Thank you, Tony.
We have had a very busy night of listening, but I thought that was all, I think that's, I think it's great. I think we need a little show and tell from time to time to really put a perspective of what we're doing here. Okay, so, does anybody have, um, anything that they would like for a future agenda item that they would like to mention now? Or are they afraid of another long night? All right, how about announcements? Anybody have anything that, that we need to point it out, point it out tonight?
You know, there's been a lot of cool and great stuff going on in our district that, you know, we keep getting good posts on Facebook about, so I appreciate all the awards and competitions going on. I just personally got to see that wheelchair basketball, and I want to thank our, um, our team-
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson was that name for the work that he does around that program. That was fascinating to see, uh, the determination and the grit, and I think I learned a lesson about overcoming some of my own limitations sometimes in life, you know, that was great and great for our, our kids with special needs. I hope they were able to come and see that.
I was there for a part of it on Friday night, and there was a real buzz. There was, it really was, and there was, um, a good mix of, uh, people that, from our district that came to watch, and it's, uh, it, it is very, it's very impressive to watch these gentlemen maneuver their, um, tricked-out wheelchairs is what they are, you know? Yeah?
I made a quick list. I wanted to thank the, uh, high school staff who, um, was here for the winter formal. Kids had a great time with that. I also liked the post that was on the high school about the Career and Tech Ed Month, which was very appropriate with our, um, presentation this evening, and just creating awareness with other parents and students within the district. And then just wanted to reference that I saw Grease, the musical, that tickets are going on sale today, and it's March twentieth to twenty-third, and then March nineteenth is our special senior citizen, that's a Wednesday night this year.
It's a Wednesday night.
Um, citizen dinner and show and tickets are six dollars, and they'll be available starting Monday from U.Cathy. And usually, board members come and we, we work with the, um, the students.
We serve.
We serve, and then the students, National Honor Society students are there as well. So, great community event.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.